Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to our chair, Chris Murphy.
Great. Thanks, Scott. Thanks, everyone, for your patience. So our next agenda item is our poll comments. So anyway, let's turn to the public order. So we've reached this to our consent agenda, which was attached, surprise of the typical items. We have the minutes from our last meeting, the warrants which were attached online, no listed leaves of absences, no retirements or resignations. We have a series of nominations that are there, and then no request for repleasance. So I would like to take a motion to accept the consent agenda as published, please. So move. Thank you to all the chairs. Any discussion about approving the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please give them a raise in your hand and say aye.
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 Opposed?
Disagreed.
Okay, very big shout. Yes. All right, so that brings us to Agenda Item 4, which is the Finance Report, associated with out of the warrants, which are going to get signed as the consent agenda. Renee will put it in DocuSign for anyone who is here. That brings us to Agenda Item 5, which is the Supervision Report.
BB, first thing that I want to do, Superintendent, that made sure I put in notes so I don't forget, I want to thank somebody who is retiring. Jerry Prue is stepping down, and he's been here 42 years, I think is the right count. So so many times I've relied on him, and he's always responded. I can't say enough positive things for his service to first the Bennington School District and then to the unified district. He's going to be a tough act to follow. So Jerry, if you're listening, I just want to publicly take a moment to thank you.
Thanks. And I would just note on that piece, the SBSU Newsletter that came out, a really nice professional bio of Jerry that hit some of the highlights.
Complete with a photo of Jerry from an era gone by, so.
Will we do the letter?
Who is currently... Jeff, you can reach out, Katie West, and she can give you whatever contact information you need to help do that, have background. So Richard is just coming into the meeting right now, but he'll be able to catch up from what's... The time of year that I would like to give you an update and report on our recovery efforts, our social, emotional, health, well-being. This is our Fall/Winter 2022 Southwest Vermont Union Elementary School District Year Two Report. And I have three individuals here with us who are crucial to this report and to what we're doing to support our students, both socially and emotionally. So I have Director of Students' Support Services, Dr. Kate Abbott. I have Director of Curriculum Assessment, Melissa Semical, and Assistant Superintendent , Argus Rhodes, for their report this year. I thank them for being here, and whenever you're ready.
Apple Street.
I don't want to say, I don't know why you have to do anything, it smells delicious.
It's part of what I fronted back, too much into the evening, yep.
That is, yeah.
Or I'm really hungry. Yeah, no, it's delicious. It's a good, it's a good cheese and wheat gallop, so I had to get out of the office and put it under here, so I'm sorry.
So thanks for having us tonight, and as part of recovery during this period of time, we want to update you as a board as to how the commitments we made as part of our recovery plan are coming along, which started a year ago when we first shared with you the investments for my plan. And the first pillar of recovery is social, emotional health and well-being. And again, we started a year ago, so this is like a year-in update. And you'll notice that the list of acronyms has grown. It happens in education. Many are acronyms we've covered before, but there's a few that I'd like to highlight halfway down the list. The SRSSIE, as a reminder, is our Student Risk Rating Scale for internalizing and externalizing. EIP, which will be a new one tonight, is Behavior Intervention Plan. EST is the Required Process in All Farbuildings, the Educational Support Team. CPI is Crisis Prevention Intervention. FBA is Functional Behavioral Assessment. BCBA is a Board Certified Behavior Analyst, which we shared last year, but we'll provide an update tonight. ABA is Applied Behavioral Analysis. And PUC, which actually is linked to United Counseling Service, but it's a partnership that we have, is Psychiatric Urgent Cancer Kids. So those are our acronyms.
And I want to take a vote to thank you for the definitions, because we do, in education, tend to use so many acronyms that people outside of our realm are mystified by, so.
Listen, management's now sitting around small tables, we're quickly processing, speaking. Do they have an FBA and is the VIP? So we're breaking down our code, which is good for us to do as well. So there's your cheat sheet. As a reminder, the Recovery tab is always on our website and checked regularly. So if anyone you know has any feedback, and as we share on Cat TV, please feel free to use the Feedback button on the SBSU website. Tonight, we're focused on the learning skills attached to the Vermont Transferable Skills, which can also be found on our website, and they are Clear and Effective Communication, Creative and Practical Problem Solving, Informed and Integrated Thinking, Responsible and Involved Citizenship, and Self-Direction Scoring. Well, the scoring criteria doesn't need to be there. Self-Direction, and these are the five transferable skills that we want our students to walk away with when they leave us. And so I'm going to turn this over now, because I do like to give you a little snapshot of data. And I will say that our goal is at the end, we save space for questions, so if you have some notes or questions as we go through this, please drop them down, and at the end, we'll be happy to talk.
You're reading my mind, as usual. So the information that Dana and I will give you, I want to preface by saying we're following the guidance from the Agency of Education in reference to providing longitudinal data, and that is that the environment was different, and we should avoid at this time any interpretations for identifying trends. But we do have the data from this fall. So looking at the data from this fall, on page two, at the bottom, if you're wondering where I'm referencing, this is all internalizing from the internalizing screener. Some examples of behaviors that they would have for internalizing would be shy, withdrawn, anxious, or lonely. And for the fall of 2022, at benchmarking for our K-6, SBEU and EST students, we are at high risk of 32%, moderate risk of 20%, and low risk of 48%. The other part of this screener looks at the external, or externalizing behaviors. Some examples of those are negative attitude, cheating, behavior problems. And right now, for our elementary schools, high risk at 18%, moderate risk for 27%, and low risk at 55%. And again, those risk levels were all taken from the screener created by the University of Kansas. We've been using this screener for at least four years now. So the other little snippet of data that we can share tonight is, at this point, so I'm also the homeless liaison, I do intakes at the start of every year, and it could happen at any point in the year, but so we have an intake count. And so last year, you can see last year how many intakes I did. The windows last year when we presented to you was in December, so between August and December of last year, you can get a sense of how many intakes I had done prior to the presentation. And then this year, the window is a little bit different, but it just gives you a sense of the homeless population that we're supporting, and that's district-wide. So this is intake for the whole SBSU, so it includes secondary as well. So what do we do with the data? And again, the first thing we do is it helps to drive our instruction. So what you see on page four, if you're following along in the room, we don't have the full report.
You have a page four.
There's only odd pages. I apologize for not giving you notes, I'm...
I'm taking, you must know from front to back, I notice the back.
I apologize, take full responsibility. We're very sorry. I will fix that when we're done here. I apologize.
We have this.
So I'm so sorry. So sorry.
I wouldn't say it, because I thought it was only my papers. You gave me one this afternoon.
On the screen, our Tier One, this is for all students, for social, emotional, behavioral instructions with all. The nice thing is, this is the same as last year's presentation, there are no changes in that we have Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, we have Second Step, which is grant-funded, we have Zones of Regulation, which is grant-funded, and of course, we have our local health curriculum standards, our physical education standards, and as Laura referenced in the start, our transferable skills, which are graduation requirements pre-K through 12 in the state of Vermont. And as a reminder, we'd just like to point out, we hope you're noticing where we've... Because it's budget season, we want you to see where opportunities are grant-funded, just to have that as a reference point. Okay, so we have notations there. The professional learning piece, again, we again need to then provide training, and so our question is, how will teachers learn more about social, emotional, behavioral, instructional strategies? And again, our focus this day is on trauma, and we cycle around opportunities because we have many professionals that we need to reach. So our new offerings for trauma and restorative practices, which we're excited about, is the contracted service provider we use for trauma is offering this year in-school collaboration, so he can go and meet with the leadership team and help to support a conversation around a student that might be experiencing trauma and suggest some strategies. So that's a new addition this year, and that's all funded through ESAR. And then through the lens of restorative practices, we continue to offer circling, but we've added office hours with our contracted service provider for those that are trying to put it in practice and need some extra support. That was a request from teachers in the field. And then also another layer of having conversations, restorative conversations, and so the professional that is supporting us is offering that as well. And that again is from feedback from our stakeholders, our professionals. We also continue to offer crisis intervention training, Zones of Regulation, and again, trauma drumming is a favorite. We've filled it two years in a row. We have just completed that. Grant assessment was approved again because of such a great request, because there is a, the common theme is rhythm. We have some owners that really crave rhythm and structure, and drumming provides that, so it's working, it's a tool that's working for some of our students. And so the new piece we want to add tonight for you, which is a little bit different, is we want to take a deeper dive into our Tier Three, Social, Emotional, and Behavioral Interventions, which are part of our multi-tiered systems of support. So all of our schools provide Tier One to all of our students, so everybody gets good first instruction. And after we collect some benchmark data, like the data you saw above, there's some kids that might need some and more. They get good first instruction and more. And then we also have some students that might need some more intensive one-to-one or small group, and so we just want to highlight some of the district-level interventions. We frame them by describing what it is. We have entry criteria, we provide progress monitoring, and then there's exit criteria. So one of the district-wide supports we have is mental health services to support anxiety and depression. This is a new one for us. We are thankful for our school counselors, clinicians, and school nurses who helped to support this Tier Three intervention. And we, again, this is where our partnership with United Counseling Service comes into play, they support this intervention. And so if the school-level teams meet either through an educational support team meeting, a 504 meeting, or an IEP to access this intervention, and then they monitor through the collection of data to determine next steps. Crisis Prevention Intervention, or CPI, is provided by a district CPI trainer, and then we also now have building-level trainers, and they're all about making sure that everyone has the skills to safely respond to various levels of risk. And again, teams can request consultations, and they can also request form-formal trainings for groups of teachers. And then the Crisis Consult Team, which is a newer, this was an innovative idea that came from our leadership team of, can we use our own internal experts to, when a school says, we really need help with this, with this student, we're not sure what to do, they can reach out through a request process to the superintendent, and we help to assign a couple of people to go just sit with the leadership team and help brainstorm and provide support. And so that's another Tier Three intervention.
So our next level of intervention is the On Point Intervention. This is an elementary intervention that's grades paper five. It's located at Conkers Street. It's open to any SBSU learner. And so the focus of the On Point Intervention is a trauma-informed system of care for learners that have mental health or social, emotional dysregulation concerns. To access the On Point Intervention, children go through a referral process through the district leadership team, that needs once a week. And we have a partnership at the On Point Center with UCS, as well as clinical services and behavioral services right on-site. We monitor students' progress at the On Point Center through their individual behavior plans, and once students have met two months of safe behavior with 80%, because no child's 100% safe all the time, we start talking about a return to a less restrictive environment. On Point is a center that serves children primarily that has more so intensive disabilities, but not 100% of the children that attend there happen to have a disability. They can have EST plan, a 504 plan, or an IEP. Another level of intervention here is Board Certified Behavioral Analyst consultation. So to access consultation from a behavioral analyst, a BCBA, any school can submit a BCBA consultation form. And what the BCBA can do is they can go and sit with that educational team, review the data that's been collected, give some more strategies, and then offer tracking tools to help monitor the effectiveness of the interventions they're working on. Then we monitor the implementation of those interventions, and then follow up until that child has returned onto a positive. You can also do a behavioral consultation that lands with a functional behavioral assessment, because these are our top tier of behavioral interventions for our BCBA's. So functional behavioral assessment is an assessment that determines the function of the child's behavior, if it's communication, or avoidance of work, or trauma-based, or control-based. And then that information gathered from that functional behavioral assessment is then used to develop the behavioral intervention plan to help that child learn new behavioral skills to function in the educational environment. So FBA's and behavioral intervention plans are then monitored through data. So if the child, generally, the data goals relate to safety and engagement in work environments and use of functional communication to get what they need. Over time, what we should be doing is fading behavioral intervention plans as a child becomes more regulated and better able to do their behaviors themselves with less of exposure. So all of those interventions we talked about, you can access without having an IEP. You can access them with a 504 plan or EST plan. This next tier, which is Tier Four, you can only access if you have an IEP. And Tier Four really talks about more restrictive environments, such as environments where only learners with IEPs have access. We have two major IEP-based programs. IDEALS is the first, and so IDEALS is for learners that have more complex types of disabilities, including communication and adaptive skills needs, that really need a modified curriculum in order for them to gain independence and meet the standards at their level. Learners who qualify for the Vermont Alternate Assessment are accepted into the IDEALS program through the district referral committee. The progress monitoring is done based on individual IEP goals and objectives, and then all children, the hope is that all children who participate in the IDEALS intervention also have time in the general education class as appropriate to their own individual development, so what they benefit from the most. So for example, it could be a joining kindergarten at circle time, but maybe they travel back to the classroom when it's reading time. The New England Center for Children is a Tier Four intervention. We contract for this intervention in our schools. The NECC programs generally provide ABA-based interventions, Applied Behavioral Analysis-based interventions, for learners that have autism spectrum-related disabilities. We have a number of NECC classrooms at Molly Stark, Bennington Elementary, as well as the middle school and high school. And children are highly, the progress of children in the NECC programs is monitored through their IEPs as well as through their ACE curriculum, which is the curriculum that they use to help meet the standards. So we focus on the children that enter NECC have a very high need for adult support, and we focus on gradually reducing that support over time as the children become more independent. So again, with NECC, children spend time in the general education classroom, and the goal is that they spend more and more of their day in the general education classroom as they can benefit from that instruction, as well as fading adult supports over time.
The last piece, similar to last year, is to just highlight the staffing patterns that support social, emotional health and wellness in each building. And to highlight, thank you again, some of these were requests from the budget season last year, some of them are also grant-funded, so we tried to highlight some of the asks so that you can see, and what you see on top right first is Bennington Elementary and Molly Stark, so you get a sense that the physicians, clinicians, and counselors, and nurses, social workers, behavior interventionists, the shared board behavior, Board Certified Behavior Analysts. Again, you'll see some similarities, you'll see the trauma therapist, which is also grant-funded, the art therapist, which is ESAR-funded, and then the K-1 alternative social, emotional classrooms, which are supported through ESAR. At Monument and Paltone, again, you're going to see some similar roles. You'll again see some new roles, the trauma therapist again is a newer role. And again, here's Shastberry at Woodford. You can see again some of the similar roles, and you'll see shared positions like the art therapist that visits different buildings. And then we've added the On Point Intervention that supports the elementary level and the staffing pattern there. And then we have some general additional supports, which we are thankful for, and using grant money for most of that, that can be accessed by the elementary schools. And so that concludes our presentation. I'm sorry, and I will run and stop, so you got it in the right way. I'll go back and use the copy here again, but do you have any questions for any of us?
Please go ahead. I got a bunch. It kind of starts with grant funding. If I understand this correctly, a grant is a fixed amount? How efficiently is that used? Is there enough grant money to cover the needs you have? Do we use all the grant money? Do we have enough staff to use the grant money?
So that's a, that's a great question. So we, a lot of, you'll notice, and again, when you, I hopefully will take a glance at this again, ESAR money we were trying to be super creative with, and those were requests from the recovery team. So that money does expire, and so we've tried really hard to maximize that piece, knowing that it will all expire in September of 2024. So when you see roles attached to ESAR, that's something that we need to be thinking about. We are constantly meeting with that team to collect data to see if what we're trying to implement is working. So we meet with them regularly to have those conversations, some of them are tracking attendance data, so we can come back and share that with you so we can see what's working. Title, you'll see title money referenced in there. Title Four is this really great pocket of money, well-rounded education, it's a bucket, well-rounded education, safe and healthy schools, and technology, all bundled into one bundle of title money. And so that is where our district-level social, emotional, behavior coach comes from our equity coordinators in there. It's another pocket of money that we think about when we're thinking about the positions we have at ESAR, and how can we be flexible? So we're constantly trying to be reflective on the amount of money we have, and we're trying to balance, how can we access more professional staff that can support our students? And then you'll also notice in there, it's also really important that we're using our grant money to support professional learning, because contract service providers, like Dave Melvin and John Kitter, who are providing like our trauma cohort, we need contracts with them every year, and we're using our grant money for that as well. So it's finding the balance with our grant money between accessing the professionals that are supporting our kids, and then also the learning that we know our teachers need so they can learn new skills as well.
Question I always get is whether, if the grant money is available, why aren't we using it all? That seems to be a question.
Yeah, and we'll come back, that's another report that we do for you during budget season where we share that piece as well, so it's a good question. There are other really teeny pockets of grant money that we'll share out with you, too, like we referenced the Medicaid preventative money that we use. That's another interesting little pot of money, but we're super creative about supporting. It doesn't necessarily get a position, but we can support some extras, extra hours outside of contracted hours to develop some protocols or maybe some consultation time for classroom teachers. So it is trying to figure out how we can maximize, we're constantly working on that piece. So it's a great question, thank you.
You know, constant challenges, we'll tell you. Usually it's lag in hiring that sometimes will result in a grant money not being completely funded or positioned. Some of these positions, these resources that you've seen on this list are very difficult to find, and we have other surrounding school districts all chasing the same resources to use. So that's usually when, why grant money isn't spent, but we haven't been able to maybe hire all the BCBA's that we want, that we've had funded, and everybody would love more of them, and there's only so many of them, so that money might get unspent. But it doesn't, on those title grants, it doesn't necessarily go away, it'll roll over to another year, so.
Every school now have an IDEALS program in one of your buildings? So there's one elementary IDEALS classroom, and all the schools, including North Bennington, can send children there. So if I understood you, and maybe I didn't, when you have shared that students can circle back to a classroom for academic needs, how do you determine who the instructor will be, which classroom they go to?
So that is, Donna's on the screen. She's not in her head. She's not in her head. She hosts our new classroom for elementary.
Yes, so yeah, great question. Those learners are assigned to a classroom teacher. So when they do, you know, feel that they can access that classroom, there's a pair assigned to them, and they go to the classroom and be with those other learners of that classroom and access the IDEALS room when they need that room for providing inclusion for everybody. It's really a successful piece here at Molly Stark. Everybody enjoys having all learners included as much as possible in the regular gen ed setting.
So was that disruptive at all for the classroom if a student is there from another school, and they happen to be in that classroom for a couple of months, a week, like the time is to be in an IDEALS program? a couple of months, a week, like the time is to be in an ideal program?
I haven't seen any disruptions yet.
And most of our learners that are in, that visit ideals, that's a complex lifelong disability situation. So they're, you don't generally move in and out during this course of the school year. They might spend more time in the general setting over the course of the school year, but they're generally years long in that intervention for part of their day, if that makes sense. So they don't just pop in and out of ideals like they pop in and out of the on point.
I'm glad you brought up, because is there enough space and on point for the demand of our students?
So if you think about, so we're student services, right? Student services are a service, not a place. So what, what we've done is thinking about the needs of the learners, tried to move the supports and services to where the learners are, instead of moving the learners to a location where there's supports and services. So the inclusion work that we've been doing, we've ended up with four VCBAs across the district instead from zero two years ago to help children that have behavioral challenges if in their element, in their home elementary school, instead of making that child move to a different elementary school to access that. Same with the clinical supports. So instead of having just one clinician in elementary, having, adding four clinicians over the course of a couple of years to all the different elementaries, allow children to access that support and service right where they like.
So you believe, yes, you have enough space?
No.
Yeah.
It depends what week you ask us.
Okay.
Yeah, there are times that they're waiting lists to, to get into services.
Just a quick question on point. Six grades one through five, does that include the Shastberry and Paddle sixth graders? Where would they end up going?
In Woodford.
In Woodford, yeah.
Sixth grade goes to Champlain at the middle school.
It wasn't if they're in Shastberry School, so you go up to the middle school then?
Yes.
And back to the elementary school?
Because there's no sixth grade teacher at the on point center.
But currently, we have anybody waiting, but have we in the past had a waiting list? Yes. And there's all, I mean, there's a process to go there. There may be a request to go there, but it doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, determine that's the best placement for that student too, so.
We, we touched against it a few different times, but can you just give us a sense as to how many of the positions that are noted in this document are actually filled right now?
Yeah, I think they're all, I think they're, there might be, there might be one, one.
Yeah, it's at my school.
Yeah. There's one that is open.
Okay.
And I have one question, Greg Lauren. For the homeless kids, have we seen an uptick after the rent assistance money dried out begin to work?
That's a great question.
Because I know we're seeing it in our world.
Yeah, yeah. That, so it's definitely a concern, the funny, so I like, so here's what I would say, like, I feel like there's support for families that are homeless that comes, I feel like there, we're having an easier time supporting them and accessing resources because there's children involved. But I do think we actually, to me, I think I saw more of an uptick in people coming from other places to our community, in particular this year. That was my difference, my, my one observation.
More relocation.
Correct.
And so along that line, Lauren, in terms of the homelessness, how much, how much stability are you seeing within those, within the homeless populations that we serve ever? So how many, how many of these are instances of what I'll call like incidental or occasional homelessness, and how much of these cases of really chronic homelessness?
I'm gonna be trying to be, so the, I present the data as SBSU data to be really, to protect this group, so I'm gonna be very global, like, so here's what I'm saying. McKinnevento protection for a child. So if we do an intake for a family, and there's a set protocol, we're trained every year in how to do the intake, it runs the school year. So they receive that protection for, for that, that school year. And I feel like we, we typically service that family for the school year.
Okay.
When, when we do the take.
So the 26 homeless families that we had in the previous period under review versus the 29 now, how mu, and I'm on page three.
Yes.
Like, how, how much churn does that shift in numbers represent? And how, is it, is it 20 of the same families and, you know, six are moving out and seven and nine are moving in, or is it, what, what does that look like?
Yeah, let me get, so the, the process is, it's sort of the, the protection, once we do the intake ones for the length of the school year, and then with the support, and I, I'm so thankful for the four, we have five family engagement specialists, four help to support immediately the, the homeless needs, and they're super helpful. We have to recertify. So we look at the list of the families that we support, and we reach out to all of them. So we, we do see a, I, I would, I would say, if I took, put, put the whole, if I add them all together and looked at that whole amount for the SBSU, I, I would say over half are, they might move into another year. But this is only my, you know, learning this process, I'm feeling much, I'm confident saying in my, in, in this year since I spoke to you last year. We're getting, we're getting more insights on track ages.
That things with the transient population of the high school, that kind of helps there?
The, so, it's great, so unaccompanied youth, and I'm very passionate about our unaccompanied youth. Yes. We, so yes, the unaccompanied youth fall under McKinnevento. I have to say initially, it was, that was a learning curve for me because they are, they range, I don't have most of them right now at the, at the high school, but unaccompanied youth, they've made the decision to be on their own. And so they're couch surfing, they're going from different places, and so that's, that is part of this population at the secondary level, but that's primarily at the high school for us.
Yeah, some of the homeless families that are homeless, is it because they don't have an apartment, and they may live with, say, a relative waiting for an apartment?
Yeah.
Because I've seen a lot of that.
Yeah. So yeah, so thank, and I'm so glad for Brock. We have one of our partners, we're so thankful for Brock. So I, when I do the intake, I have specific questions that I have to ask, and the, the first one says, do you have?
Or are you dispute an act? Brock.
Oh. Yes, Bennington. Thank you. That's why we're all here to help each other. I, I get another community resource and right near Principal Basics School, which is help homes right across the street. They, they actually help us quite a bit with triage housing, so we, we can call them for support with that. My first question that I always have to ask is, do you have an, a regular adequate nighttime residence? Or are you in shared housing? And then I define that. Are you steering family number? Are you staying with a friend? Some people have just found someone that will take them in, that does happen. And then I say, or are you in a campground? Are you in a shelter? Are you in a hotel? A motel? Or other, which could be their car? So, so that's the question asked, and I, I say it in that manner. So shared housing comes up often, and I often clarify, you know, some people are doubling up is another, another word for it, but yes, so we, that, that is another one that comes up quite frequently. We're also lovely, the homeless coalition in our town, so they have a family shelter as well, which is, which is great. So often, if they have waiting lists, all of our, our resources are, we're thankful for them, and they are stretched, and we all try to take care of each other because we need each other, so they're one of our wonderful partners. So the family homeless shelter, we do a great job of staying communicated, so we're helping to make sure that, you know, kids are accessing school. And then again, I can't speak enough, our family engagement specialists that meet them right where they're at, and our job is to make sure that they have everything they need to be successful in school. And sometimes they come here and hang out, and we help to support them with given things they need, like right now, boots for snow is very popular, and sometimes it's, but the message is we can help with anything that's going to help them be successful in school, and we use our title money, so it's great money that we have that's required, set aside, and then Esser provided an extra grant that we still have access to. So a cool one to know is the elementary board, that's one of my, came from our, it was an idea from one of our community members, is let's make sure that our unaccompanied youth have access to driver's ed. Let's give them permits. So there's some cool problem solving things that we can do to, to build excitement, to wrap around these families.
Just Jim just said something, it just, so Jim just mentioned codes and the boots. Is there a location, you know, just for the community out there, if there's a place to drop that stuff, to access the students, or is there a location they can drop it? Or is there a resource they should reach out to, or people want to donate?
We're not, we're not a reset, we're not a donation center for like used clothing or, or nothing.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying, is there any community place that, you know, with excess money to?
It's usually specific, like by a family or by a child, so it's tough for, because yes, we don't, we don't keep an inventory.
They donate to UCS funds to do UCS for those type of.
I would, I thought a homeless coalition, the, the director of the homeless coalition, she would be a great resource to say, because she also is connected to the, the family center, which is where I think exactly what you're talking about is a great direction, and people often reach out to them. Another great place to ask for anyone, Economic Services 211. It would be another one to, to ask, to say.
You need to make monetary funds for.
Yeah, especially this time of year.
Because we're trying to grant myself, I wouldn't want to solicit funds to come here for that.
I'm just trying to work with our community, I really, with our community, so.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, that's great. Yeah, because we're always trying to connect our community resources.
Yes.
Any more questions, Lauren?
I'll go run some correctly. Say something, and the first register that they want to, we do intake, so they donate clothes, we have all kinds of clothes. They come in, usually they're on Sundays.
Yeah.
If they come in, they go up, they can pick out whatever they want free, so.
That's awesome. Thank you for sharing.
And we have that open door policy.
That is something that we could, in first, we can pass along.
Yes.
We have families come for us this year.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we, just to get a tiny budget season conversation, because we're not in budget season, so Director Finance, Renee Gordon, has just finished her rounds of meetings with principals and directors, and she may have a few more to finalize things, and then she'll meet with me and Assistant Superintendent Doudre, and we will look at what, what's being asked for before we present it to the boards. There is, you know, obviously, there are, there are some positions, because even though the incredible resources that you saw in this presentation, I think we have principals would say it's not enough, or the position is shared between, I need my own. So we hear that. And how much of it, you know, we're going to be able in any one budget year, shift and accommodate versus at the same time, some of these resources, if you heard what they're saying, some of these that are grant funded are essential, we really want to, as the data shows that they're essential, we want to work them into our budget, so. But with all the other pressures that are budget, inflation, negotiations, you know, I do have concerns that what, what we'll be able to accomplish that. But I do want to give you the, so I did ask Director Renee Gordon to give me an update on where we are, so I can share that with you. And some things I do want to share with you, and I want to read it so I get it, you know, better. So you know that the annual meeting has to be one, you have no one, no, less than thirty, no more than forty days before, and that doesn't include the day of the meeting, but this year, it is, like last year was probably the earliest that the annual meeting could be, this is the latest that we, so annual meeting is not going to be till March 7th this year. So we have a, you know, at least an extra week for our budget planning purposes. So when will we be presenting budgets to the board? Well, next week is a short week with Thanksgiving, and, and I'm sure we're not ready to meet with you yet. The following week, auditors are here, so the week of the 28th, the auditors are all that week, so we won't be in any position to meet with boards on budget. So the following, that first week of December, I think that might be December 5th, that's when you should start seeing us requesting the different budget meetings with all the different boards and work that through December. So some of you may say, well, we met in November before, you've heard why we won't, and it's, we got time. So December, January, you know, be looking for us to tell you that we, we're gonna be having some budget meetings. And then there are some other important dates that, you know, I'll just remind you, we have these every year. December 1st, the equalized pupil counts are supposed to come from AOE, supposed to come from AOE, and it's been significantly delayed the past two years, so I'm, I'm not counting on it being here December 1st. Also, December 1st would be the projected homestead yield to come from the Vermont Tax Commissioner, and we'll see if we get that in time. These are all things that, you know, Renee will need to use as she tells you what your final budgets and assessments will be. And then mid to late December, the common level of appraisal for each town comes up from the Department of Taxes, so stay tuned as we, we go through our budget process. It'll be a busy time for the Director of Finance and Operations, as it always is, but it'll be going on well through to the end of January. And the other thing I wanted to mention to you, you did get an email from me, I hope you all saw it, the principal of Bennington Elementary School needed to take leave, and so she's on an extended leave of absence. I want to thank Assistant Principal Ben Brunel for stepping up last week and covering, and he is a brand new vice principal this year. And starting yesterday, we were able to dust off and bring back one of our retired. I always like to hear in the room, I am very thankful to Jim Howard for coming back out of retirement, and he started on Monday over at Bennington Elementary School. It may not be the, the permanent solution, we're also working on some other supports, as I mentioned in the email, that we could give to Bennington Elementary School or the administration of that school, but I want to thank Ben for the shock of me telling him last week, you're in charge, so I can find somebody else. And grateful to Jim Howard for stepping up and give, Jim, if you're listening, I apologize for the dust off comments. Any questions for, and I, oh, we have more to talk about in the executive session too.
Other questions from the superintendent?
One just related to budget, I think. I, we're still waiting to hear from, about the academic, anything from last year, or the NAEP results, or some type of benchmarking. I was kind of wondering if we had that on the radar, that we might hear something.
Well, Assistant Director of Curriculum and Instruction addressed that in her report. I don't know if you caught what she said in the beginning of that, do you?
Social, emotional, I didn't, I guess I didn't catch.
Or not even scores, which are just released. I mean, I think they're just released.
We generally haven't presented the, the NAEP scores to boards, but I mean, that's, that's something that we can put in the academic.
Because I mean, they were, there's significant drop, I think nationally and at the state level.
Agreed, yes. We just have not presented that, but I didn't know if it was, it was a request. Actually, any is what I was kind of hoping that we would get in a world, because the traditional May meeting, when we usually get that, we've got a wonderful presentation on grants. So we haven't actually had an active piece where we know. The one in September is a huge time. Well, we did ESPEC data, then you were waiting for some ESPEC data to come out. We presented the ESPEC data.
I think what she's looking at is like, where do the kids actually stand? Look at the NEEP scores, you can actually see which kids are proficient, average, below average, you know, where, where is that risk? And, you know, we're not, we're looking for, seeing this, for school specific, globally across the district. You look at the math scores, it's on there, it tells you, you know, your kid falls here, and this is what you did with Donna a couple of years ago, and then it says, your kid follows here at the X, you know, level. You know, the next level is this way they follow in the school, and the third level says this is where they follow them in the district. I think it's the board, it'd be nice to see where the kids at, at the district level, where they fall on that whole point scale. I know you've seen that data too, as a principal, so if it's out there, it'd be nice to see as a board member, you know, see what, what our kids actually need.
Part of my recollection of the, of the academic information presentation group, there were, there were student groups, I think it was fourth and fifth grade, there was a, a piece of the information that was absent because of, as I recall, because of the way the information was gathered, or maybe not sufficient numbers were gathered.
Correct.
So is there, when will there be an opportunity, Sandy, if I'm understanding your question?
Yes, thank you.
When will there be an opportunity to get an update on, on that missing chunk of data? Um, when will there be an opportunity to get an update on, on that missing chunk of data?
They're thinking it would be dependent, if the board would like to see MAPS data, um, if we wanted to see MAPS data, then that would be our next benchmark, which is this winter. And we have one in the spring. And if you're talking about data from the state level, which I can no longer use the term Svac, because they're not going to use that. Um, but I will say state data, um, I would say next September would be the time that, that would be released.
So did you finish, were you able to finish the, um, uh, MAPS testing for the fall, are they done yet?
So this current MAPS testing were done, yes.
Okay, so you have, you will have or do have?
We have and our schools have been using them, I, I see one principal crisscrossing her head, they're using them within the buildings, yes.
Sure, fabulous, so I, I feel like I wanna be on the same team as, but I don't know where we are as a district. Just overall, I don't feel like I understand, I hear nationally and statewide that the numbers have been difficult. But I really don't feel I understand where we are.
In the, in the community, I guess. Cause some districts actually release that as part of their reports, like, our kids are here, uh, you know, this is internal testing, near MAPS testing, this is the Svac. You know, there are districts across the state that do release that to their boards, only it sounds like that's what you're asking for.
She's referring to the, I don't mean to interrupt.
No, please.
But the Svac testing was released.
Yeah.
Um, to the boards, I believe what you're talking about was the MAPS testing for those particular grade levels, because we had difficulty during that time. Um, that we're talking about getting a big enough sample size of kids within the building to test, and we never, we never tested remotely during that. So I think what you are asking for is just the MAPS testing, because we did provide the Svac test.
The Svac, I thought though, as you said, Chris, was for the grades, the middle school, it really didn't go where it's.
I think it was one, two, three, and then it was, it was six, seven, eight.
Yeah.
I can, I can bring that to Jim and, and have that reviewed to bring to.
So is this the Svac testing that you just presented?
Yeah, the S, it was in that, is that from? It's from.
From last month.
Last. Two months, two, two meetings.
Two months, September.
Meetings, yeah.
September meetings.
I think maybe what we can do to, to deal with this is to set it as an agenda item for next, for next month, to sort of, to, to review that again. If, if there is a concern that getting too detailed with the information might lead to folks being able to put pieces together and identify certain students or super families or whatever, right, there is a provision within the meeting law that would allow us to have that conversation in executive sessions, that we could have maybe a more frank discussion of the numbers. Um, so, I think Jim, you and I can have a conversation about leading up to, to our next meeting, and we'll, we'll take.
I think, Chris, when you send those report home to the students, it says like, your child follows that level two, you know, you know, so the data's out there.
Right.
And parents, again, anyways, learn the community, as, but I don't think as a board, you know, people are seeing this information, like, so where are the kids following that? Four point scale, one, two, three, four, you know, one, two, three, four, where are they following? Um, I think that's what Sydney's looking for, to see where they need, where they are for math and.
Sure, so maybe, so let, let's play it like this, Peter, please, if board members have specific questions, they would like to have answered, email you. Yeah, why don't you send me those, Sandy, I'll, I'll just say that again, um, if board members have specific questions that they would like to have answered specifically with regard to a presentation of the academic standing of our, of our students, email those to me, please, cause what I'd like to do is put together a map for the list of the things worth looking for, to then pass it off to the folks who have the information and can, and can.
Just a caveat from the conversation, look, Sandy was referring to the MAPS data, so that can be provided, the Svac data was provided for all grade levels, and we'll be going, um, home with individualized reports this fall.
So, uh, remind me, there was a reason why three through five was missing, it was because of,
They couldn't test.
They couldn't test during that period of time, and, okay.
But I, I think it would be very, I don't need to jump into what, what I could provide, but because we have now the fall data, as Sandy pointed out, we could do fall twenty-two to give you a, a, a snapshot due to that.
Okay.
Because we did, they're back in school, things are, 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 um, approaching the, the, the normal.
The normal, yeah.
Okay. And then that's what they talked with the NEEP scores, they talked about, you know, in twenty nineteen, we had them. We did them last year, and you can see the impact of the pandemic within, you know, those groups, it's hard to track each group level, but you can say as a trend, we've taken huge, it's educational wise, on the years of lack of skills.
So we can, we'll be, we'll delve more deeply into that, I guess, at that point soon. Uh, any other questions or comments from Superintendent? Okay, moving on, uh, so Policy's been a really solid Policy Committee meeting. Or, um, two policies are up for us to warn, um, tonight, one is the discipline of students, very suspension and expulsion, specifically the changes were made, um, to put that decision in the power of the superintendent or their designated. Uh, loosely defined as, as administration prior to that, and that left open too many questions, so. Specifically, place it on, uh, at least for the current time, on Jim's shoulders instead of someone else's shoulders. And then, uh, fifty eighty-five, search and seizure. Um, it, it points to a few, it includes the, the digital devices that are on loan from the school and students, including perhaps even electric pencils. Um, we, it includes, um, statements that school officials will not be acting as agents of law enforcement, essentially. Um, and that we can do these searches without the knowledge of students, so those are the changes. Um, unless there's a desire to break them up, I would entertain a motion to award both policies fifty fifty and policy fifty eighty-five, please.
So, thanks, Jim.
Back in. Any discussion, any discussion on, uh, warning those policies?
Um, just one discussion, if people remember in June of this year, from our dedicated article on suspension with students with disabilities, um, they found there's some pretty big issues with that pause, and just looking at that, our one, two, three, four, five point line, um, I just wanna make sure that we address that, so, you know, I can send you the article, Chris, so you can bring it to the Policy Committee.
Okay.
But, I mean, it was a pretty detailed policy of how some of the students with disabilities across the state have not, you know, they, you know, they, it was not found to be legal.
Okay.
Um, this district that laws, so I just wanna make sure that it's, it's being addressed in our district, so we're not.
Yeah. Okay.
So I'll send you that email.
Thanks. All right, uh, any, any other discussion regarding those two policies?
Couple of questions, um, uh, fifty eighty-five, search and seizure, on line twelve. Do we now want to say his, her, and theirs? As part of the, um, equity policy that we had last year?
Um, yeah, and I, for me, I feel like that's one of those changes, we could, we don't need to turn this to the cycle, I feel like we can still.
No, I just noted, it's not a substantive change.
Yeah.
And then on line forty, of that same policy, um, I just, um, in that same equity policy, um, it has that a school administration, certainly conducted with an employee of the same gender as the student. And I remember from the equity policy, that the student decides what they identify, and so I'm just hoping that the Policy Committee took that into consideration when they were writing that.
I don't know that that was specifically considered, Sandy, um. I, I, yeah, I mean, I, I'm just.
Cause that's not new language.
It's not new language, but it, it, it takes on a new importance in view of, um, the equity work that, that the district has undertaken and supervisory has undertaken. I, I guess I would, my thinking on this is that because the equity stuff is ensconced in policy, and all staff members are required to abide by policy, and by virtue of that, this idea is coming, yeah.
And I don't know how else you, you would write that.
Either indicate, um, be those, by the same gender they identify.
But that, that could open a can of worms. Because you can.
Because then you're asking.
Male or the female, and they search by a male staff member, but then, um, that there are other issues with the male staff members, we're searching a identified male student who is actually, so, is it a can of worms?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, again, I, my thought is, sure, the possibility for something. If, one, the possibility exists for something to occur that is not covered by the current language, um, but I don't know that that's avoidable.
And one last thing, uh, page three, line six, um, I think that maybe, I don't wanna read into it, but that you may have wanted to defend it more, designated. In case, in the absence of both superintendent?
On fifty fifty. In, in policy.
Yes, fifty fifty, sorry.
Um, yeah, and I think that's also not a substantive change, because that, that maps the language throughout the rest of it, um, so, Chris. Okay, so I'll, I'll run those by Leon. Great, thank you for those, so with, with those observations shared by Sandy, um, motion still standing? To warn these two policies?
Yes.
Great, uh, any further discussion? Very none, all those in favor of warning policy fifty fifty, policy eighty, this area is your hand, say aye.
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 Can I just correct for the record, I think you said fifty fifty eight, it's fifty eighty five.
Thank you, fifty fifty, fifty eighty five, thanks, Sandy. Um, any, any extensions?
Okay.
The motion passes, great, thank you. Um, that brings us to the Chair Reports, uh, it won't be long, um. Wanted to start by also acknowledging Jerry Prue, and, um, just finding the humor that he, Jerry had been asking for a truck for as long as I can remember. Gets it, and like three months later, she decides to. That's right, so I don't know if I was listening for Jerry, or if it's, but, and I, and I, and I just smiled when I saw the thing in the, in the news light, so, so. Hopefully it's not, yeah, professional bucket, that's nice. Um. I, I wanted to, to make note that, um, there will be some vacancies on this board coming up, um, the who's not my business to say, it's not my announcement to make, but it's nice to say we will have some vacancies. Um, so to all of you who are hearing these words, either, uh, consider if you as an individual or someone you know would be a good, uh, fit for serving in this capacity, you talk to your town managers, your town clerks, because they'll have the inside scoop on the timing for getting on a ballot. Um, I called them Wednesday, I called the Bennington Town Office on Wednesday, um, kind of forgetting that they had just done this major vote on Tuesday, and, um, Kayla was like, almost out of breath, like, what, you wanna know about another election, so, they do good work, they all do good work, I just picked a lot of time to call and ask to have some. Um, and then, uh, one other thing that came up is, um, another place for families to get coats and boots, is that, uh, Mount Anthony Lodge number thirteen, the Freemasons Lodge here in town. Uh, they do an ongoing coat donation location, and, uh, very often do to set racks out on the street for folks to come take what they want, when they want. Yeah, so with that, so, um, that exhausts the Chair's reports, and I will move on to Principal Basic for the Principalist Report.
And Donna, I apologize that, I don't know how, I, I didn't catch that, uh, you up, put this down so far on the agenda, we should have had you up closer with the Superintendent's report, so, but thank you for joining us tonight.
Sure. So, good evening, everybody, thank you for the opportunity to be part of the Southwest Vermont Elementary School District Board Meeting this evening. I'm proud to share, uh, some data with you on our school's continuous improvement plan. This year's focused tasks with innovative thinking, community celebrations, and partnership with all Molly Stark staff. Before I do, I do wanna acknowledge the Molly Stark staff and their passion for the growth and success of all learners. This school community comes together in times of challenges and raises the bar and expects everybody to be part of that piece as a family. They support each other, learners and families. Our staff listens when there are concerns and provides supportive feedback and suggestions when asked. I'm very proud to be the Molly Stark, be part of the Molly Stark community. So this year, we have many new staff, about over sixteen, um, this does not include our NEC program or early education. Our veteran teachers and staff show a warm welcome to our new staff this year and continue to support and appreciate this great addition to the team. Ter, Terri Killery, our new Assistant Principal, is a great addition as well. Terri partners with our wellness team and continues to update our response to behavior and proactive support for learners, staff, and families. The wellness team, which used to be called our learner support center, also focuses on an increase in adult and children's experiences using creativity and space for activities to provide mindfulness and areas to regulate and be ready. So it's for learners and staff. Often found wealthy, welcome, Terri often can be found welcoming our learners and families, playing football, running with learners, and making relationships. He was a great addition as a, uh, dress up for Paddington the Bear during our open house, uh, title meeting in the beginning of the school year. So to talk about safe and healthy schools, I, I very much appreciate it here in the presentation, because that has been a, a number one focus and priority at Molly Stark. Our wellness team reviews behavior data regularly and also partners with Scott Berg, who is an outside consultant. This year, Scott is scheduled to meet regularly with staff during our early release days to focus on trauma. So far, our team schedules daily yoga sessions in the wellness area, positive sensory breaks, and lunch groups. Our music teacher, Hillary Chase, provides trauma drumming, which is an exploration of music time. It's getting their rhythm, and it's been very powerful seeing these learners access the drumming that, uh, we had Otha Day here, and we also had, I forgot his name, that, um, Steve, I think Ferris, um, provided some drumming for our learners last year, and it just really provided that unity of rhythm and, again, community. Um, our Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, PBIS, another acronym, looked at our schoolwide information system early in October, and we shared this data with our staff. Two hundred and forty-nine out of two hundred and ninety-three had zero behavior referrals. So a very, very, a small percentage of learners received major behavior referrals. This is a, a very successful, uh, piece of data, and we wanna celebrate how so many learners are attending school and following our expectations of safe, kind, responsible, and respectful. Talking about our, um, continuous improvement, ELA, um, our literacy leadership team reviews our literacy data, Fastbridge and MAPS, and shares this with our staff. I'm gonna show, uh, share an example, what our literacy leadership team, um, examined some of our data the other day in our meeting. We looked at the continuum of reading skills for second grade, and there was a number of students who are on the decoding and still working to master consonant vowel consonant words. One suggestion from that meeting was to set up a reading challenge to get students reading more between now and December break. We will use the decodable books that we ordered to provide more time in reading, in addition, inviting families for a read with your child event and watch a parent video reading with their child. Our new teachers and veteran teachers are implementing these foundational skills, lesson plans, which give our learners the strategies and practice in early reading skills. The walkthroughs and observations I've made thus far this year, it has been a joy seeing our teachers implementing small reading groups using the decodable box. Thank you for your support and having these books accessible to our learners. And our continuous improvement goal for math, we have a new math coach this year, her name is Julie Tredway, who has been a leader and a partner with our teachers in professional learning communities, looking at data, instruction, specifically in Math Menu. Math Menu is a, a list of options for math activities done individually or in pairs. And it is, um, accessed on chart paper. Many activities are differentiated, and students choose the order in which they want to do the activities and which, if they want to repeat them. To talk about our community, as we mentioned, Brock Bennington Rutland Opportunity Council, I had to search kind of hard to get that, uh, information, but Tom Doniu is a, a great, um, supporter at Molly Stark, and our PTG this past two weeks partnered with our, um, learners at Molly Stark, and we, um, raised four hundred dollars in pennies, again, for the Pennies for Heat, um, that we donate back to Brock to provide. to Brock to provide support in fueling housing, people who don't have, don't qualify under the, the criteria and may need some heat. So we were able to provide some, a lot of weighted pennies to the bank, and maybe a little bit more change in some other denominations. Tomorrow, we'll be hosting our Thanksgiving feast with families, and on Thursday, we have two performances of Molly Stark and Moose Jr. to rock it out. We are excited to continue these fun events that make our school community. I'll end with our vision, Molly Stark Elementary School is committed to empowering our learners and knowledge and compassion in this diverse and evolving society. Thank you so much, and does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Donna. Any board members have any questions for Principal Basic? Donna, could you please just say again that the first stat you gave regarding the, the drop in percentage of learners who required major, major behavioral referrals, can you just give us that number again, please?
So we had 249 out of 293 had zero behavior referrals.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome. And, and in the conversation of data to the MAPS data that has, and FastBridge and the S VAC, all that will be mailed out to our families and talked about at our conferences.
Any, any questions, Principal Basic? Great, thank you so much, Donna, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to Agenda Item 9, from the FYI, there's the Budget Status Report that was posted, and then the student enrollment numbers, or, I'm sorry, the Budget Status Report, I think, was posted while the student enrollment numbers were done. So that brings us to 10. So we have an agenda item for executive session for two reasons. I don't anticipate there being any action items for us to come back in the open session to do, but I don't know that I can swear on that necessarily. So to that end, I guess I would ask, Richard, we can tell you when we end up closing up shop, if you don't want to stick around. And in terms of CAT TV, I can't guarantee that you won't miss out on it, it's really exciting if, if you go away during our executive session. So I would entertain a motion, please, that this board meeting move it to executive session, pursuant to one, Vermont Statutes annotated subsection 313a2, which allows consideration of the appointment or employments or evaluation of a public officer or employee, provided that the public body shall make a final decision to hire or appoint a public officer or employee in an open meeting, and shall explain the reason for its final decision during the open meeting, and pursuant to one, Vermont Statutes annotated subsection 313a7, which allows a consideration of the academic records or suspension or discipline of students. I'd entertain a motion for that effect, please.
Oh, oh.
Thank you, Nick.
That's okay.
Okay. Paul Susan, are you going to, any discussion about moving into this executive session? Superintendent, please, I saw that Nick was on the line at one point.
Yes, and he still is.
Great, and I don't know that we need to announce that we're inviting our, our lawyers, but if Dean is here, we can bring her in as well.
Don't think she's here.
Okay, that's fine. Any, I think we need to take action, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any extensions? Okay, we are in executive session.
CAT TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support CAT TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.